Okay, this is the most difficult task I've had in a while, calling this crew to, and meeting to order here. What a crowd. This happens to be the month where we have government activity reports from Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts in schools, so we're delighted to have you here. And at this point, I would like to not only call the meeting to order, but welcome PAC-99 Cub Scouts as they do the flag presentation and lead us in the ceremonial opening. Please rise.
(inaudible) Scouts, please salute. Post the flag, post the colors of PAC-99. Post the colors of the United States of America. Post the colors of the great state of American.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, and thank you Cub Scout PAC-99.
Thank you for having us.[259.14][259.14](applause)
Part of earning their badge is they sit and take in the meeting and learn about government, so I think this is a great opportunity for them, and we thank you for selecting Waxaw for your meeting.[276.33][276.33](laughing) We have nobody sign (laugh)- thank you Charlie. So at this point in time, we have no amendments to the agenda, so entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have, no one signed up for the initial public comments pertaining to items on this agenda, so at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this point, you know, back a few weeks ago, we had a, Five Stones conducted a day of service partnering with the town of Waxaw. If you happened to get up early, you saw them mulching various, and pine strawing various places around town from, I ran into them at Town Hall, I ran into them at the Police Department, I ran into them at the David G. Barnes Park and the trails, and really did a quality job of beautifying, beautifying the area. They culminated that by inviting the entire town to enlist, just exemplifies Five Stones Church. They had a community-wide birthday party, and one of the things that the town of Waxaw has been a great receiver of from Five Stones is that they've put community first for as long as they've been here. They've participated in every one of our events, they bring the community together. All walks of life, all face, we're just one big community. And they culminated it in, with their birthday, with their birthday celebration, the corner lot was packed, and with the number of people, community-wide, that came and talked about just what it meant to be community-based was very warming to me as I, as I attended and talked with Pastor Ralph. And so with that, the town of Waxaw is proud to acknowledge the outstanding achievement for days of service with the town of Waxaw. We'd like to ask Pastor Ralph to come up with his team and be recognized.
I think they deserve a round of applause.[438.12][438.12](applause)
Are you saying we were too wide? Is that what you're saying?
Somebody all want to come down here in front?
I'm the only one?
I might not get back out.[465.12][465.12](laughing)
Thank you.[467.12][467.12](applause)
Sure, go. Okay, alright. Hey, so the guys you see in the red shirt, a lot of them were our project managers, and they represent a team of just over 500 people who showed up to help serve the community. And those 500 plus represented about 2,000 people. We call Five Stones home, and, but we're more proud to call Waxaw home. And we understand that when we rally together, like-minded, that incredible impact can be made, and we want you to know that it wasn't for the glory of Five Stones, the glory of God. And when you know that you're loved incredibly, you can't help the love of others. And so we hope that any of, anything that you catch a glimpse of, it's the fact that we know that we're loved, and we love Waxaw, oh, because it's gotten us. So thank y'all for the opportunity.[518.82][518.82](applause)
Next item on the agenda, we're moving right along to public hearings. We're set to have a public hearing on the Howie property for initial zoning, RZ 009-395-2019. The presenter will be Jeff Wells, our planning director, and at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff, welcome.
Thank you Mayor, we appreciate the opportunity tonight. Is that better?
Yep.
Good evening. This is the public hearing report for the Howie property initial zoning, and this is a request by the town of Waxaw for the recently annexed Howie property just south of us here. The request is to zone the property from Union County R-20, residential 20, to the town of Waxaw, R-1, or single-family residential. The property totals approximately 91 acres and identified by the below-tax ID parcel numbers. So just to give you a little bit of the lay of the land, this is an aerial photo of the subject area highlighted in blue. It has frontage along Highway 16 on the northeastern part of the property, also has street frontage along Waxaw Marvin Road on the southern portion of the property. Downtown proper is located to the southeast of this subject property. You can see some of the residential development that is just east of, and southeast of the subject area. Harrison Park is to the west and northwest of this subject property. And as you can imagine, as a large, large piece of property, there are quite a number of zoning districts that surround it. To the north, you have C-3, or commercial, with uses such as the post office Dollar General and the Allen Lindsay Center. To the northeast is properties that are zoned conditional use, C-3. Most of those properties right now are vacant, but there is a tire and auto store there at the corner of Waxaw Parkway and 16. Directly east is parcels that are actually owned by the Howie family that are in town, and they are zoned R-3, single-family residential. To the southeast is properties that are zoned for single-family residential downtown, which is our urban neighborhood residential zoning district. To the south is C-2, as well as I-1. Those are commercial and industrial districts, the Athletic Barn and the Waxaw Equipment Rental is along Waxaw Marvin Road there. Directly to the west of the property is some single-family residential, large lots that are zoned NMX, or neighborhood mixed use. And then lastly, we have Harrison Park that I mentioned just a moment ago, that is zoned residential mixed 1, rather conditional use residential mixed 1. The property was zoned when it was in Union County as R-20, residential 20, was a single-family zoning district. It did allow for 20,000 square foot lots, that's roughly a half acre lots. It also did allow duplexes, as well as mobile homes in their zoning district. The future land use map has this property in the intended growth sector, and is designated as mixed use and residential mixed. Definition of the mixed use purposes this designation provides for a mixture of commercial and residential uses in areas that are along major transportation routes, or strategically located to function as the center of the neighborhood. Residential mix, this designation provides for a mixture of housing types set in a walkable neighborhood. The proposed zoning for the property is again R-1, or single-family residential. The purpose of this zoning district is to provide for the residential use of land developed in a very low-density pattern, and the principal structure of the R-1 zoning district is the single-family detached dwelling. In fact, there are very few other uses allowed in the R-1, except for single-family detached primarily. And this is a table of the lot requirements, and the one that I would ask you to pay a specific attention to would be the lot area, minimum lot area, again 100,000 square feet, which roughly equates to about two and a third acre for minimum lot area. After a municipality annexes property, it must establish an initial zoning on that recently annexed area. A state statute calls for that to be done within a 60-day period. It is also a somewhat common practice in municipalities to zone it to a lower-density district, and that preserves it for future development considerations. A close example of a municipality that does do that is Matthews. An initial zoning of the property to R-1 is the board's best option to accomplish that goal of future development considerations and preservation of that, knowing that this property is in a vital location, and its location being imperative that the right mix of uses and the right density is ultimately achieved. Staff recommends approval of the initial zoning of the Howie parcels recently annexed into the town, and this initial zoning is for a general zoning district to establish the R-1, single-family residential district, and therefore no conditions can be placed on the approval. The recommended options would be a motion to approve as presented, and this would be at your October 22 meeting, or a motion to deny as presented. The staff's recommended reasonableness and consistency statement would read, "The zoning request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxaw, but is reasonable and in the public interest as it establishes initial zoning on a parcel recently annexed as required by state law, and preserves the property by applying a very low-density residential district while determining the highest and best use for the parcels in the future." And this is again, the lowest-density district that we can zone it as a general zoning district within the timeline that we're required to, to give that initial zoning designation. And again, I do think that this is the right idea to preserve it, and look forward to working with the property owner and some developer down the road at the proper mix of uses for the site. The owners of the property are aware of this, and this is an initial zoning request initiated by the town. I've had a handful of conversations with Mr. Howie, I'm not sure if he's in the room this evening with all of the crowd in here, but he is aware of staff's recommendation and our statute tour requirements for initiating a zoning district for, for this property. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Just a point of clarity, this is a public hearing, the next step is for the planning board to conduct their meeting and make a recommendation, advisory recommendation to the board?
Yes, that is correct. The planning board will make their recommendation on this at their next meeting, which is October 21st, and then the board will be able to make their decision after the planning board makes, makes their recommendation, which is required by our ordinance.
Thank you. Questions of the board? Commissioner Burns?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Westlake? Mayor Frottem? Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Anderson? Rather straightforward, so thank you very much. I have no questions. I don't, Mr. Howie, if you're somewhere hiding back there, if you, okay, give the applicant a chance, but he's not here. He has called me too, and he's, he is grateful that you have met with him, and appreciates all the interaction that you've had, so he's very much aware of what, what's going on tonight and the planning board, et cetera, so thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
With no further questions, and we have nobody signed up to, to comment, at this point in time, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have motion, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you Jeff. Now on to new business. Mr. Matt Hubert will come up, and he wants to talk through requests to submits, some projects to the Charlotte Regional Transportation Organization for some grant funding and new, for applications for some new roadway projects. Matt, welcome.
Thank you. Great to see the youth here interested in our roadway projects.[1141.58][1141.58](laughing) Try to keep them awake.
I think one of them was saying that if it wouldn't have been so traffic congested, they would have been here a little bit earlier and been able to practice.
That's why we have these not at peak hour.[1154.15][1154.15](laughing) So yeah, this is a request to, to review the proposed DA grant funding applications for this open hall, which ends this month.
Matt, will you make sure you're speaking in the mic from there, I'm having trouble hearing you in the back.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
So I've reviewed the potential projects available on the list with the CRTPO, Union County, and NCDOT, and these, these are the top two projects I think are, are ready to be considered for submittal this month, in order of their priority. NC 75 and Old Providence Road intersection is ideally going to be a roundabout. Second on the list is Waxaw Marvin Road and the Gray Byram intersection, which would be a stoplight addition. The reason I'm submitting these is, one, 75 and Old Providence Road is already going to be submitted next year with the CIA analysis, but we can get ahead of the game and get a year under our belt if we go ahead and submit now. Similar with Waxaw Marvin Road as well. If we do get grant funding, then we won't have to use complete town funds for these projects. Some of these are in our current draft CIP, so those costs would get reduced over the time periods that they were established. And 75 and Old Providence is a very high priority project, it's number one on the, on the critical intersection analysis that the county is doing. Gray Byram, per se, is not high in terms of the capacity that it's at, but because NCDOT is already planning to put a stoplight on the other side of Gray Byram at NC 16, was supposed to be this year, it's got tied up and right away, that's going to increase the traffic we're going to expect to see on Gray Byram, as more vehicles know they can get to, get to that turn on 16. So it does make sense in that aspect to try and plan ahead for it. Both of these projects would help with congestion issues, and then I would submit them at any time for these grants in order to defray the cost to the town. Priority one, NC 75 and Old Providence, does have a high incidence of crashes. There are almost no pedestrian movements allowed for right now. It's not efficient, and the levels of service are both an F in the AM and the peak hour, and that's basically a failure state. It's beyond capacity at those peak hours. It's proposed to be a single-lane roundabout that will reduce the crash rate, they will add sidewalks and crosswalks to properly accommodate pedestrians, will improve the efficiency in the AM peak to a C, and in the PM peak to a B. I've included tables for your own reference on really what that means in terms of unsignalized So the meat of the request is this, right now, we would engage Kimley Horn as our traffic consultant to complete the application that requires a concept analysis and a cost, a detailed cost breakdown. Just a quick back-of-the-envelope estimate is, is one and a half million dollars. The CRTPO requires a 40% contingency for designs of a conceptual nature, so that's a $600,000 addition, to make it a $2.1 million estimate. The minimum local match to be approved for CRTPO funding is 20%, that's $420,000. I would propose that the Union County also match 25%, of our match for $100,000, which would bring our estimated cost to 320, which is what we would have to resolve to put in our budget if we submitted the application. I see this coming from our SDP funds. I would replace the Pine Oak realignment and the, and the CIP funding with, with this project if it were to move forward. I also recommend that we ask NCDOT to take over administration of the project if the grant is approved, so, because it is two DOT roads, and, and we really don't want to be bogged down with, with the effort required, but we are an ideal applicant to submit for DA funding to get this project moving along. Second project is Waxaw Marvin and Gray Byram. Again, it would just add a signal and some pedestrian improvements in the, just in the vicinity of the intersection. Again, the, the full build-out volumes show it failing, but that's a 20/40, it's not imminent, but what it is, is just another piece of the puzzle in the corridor, that if we start putting all these intersections together, Kensington Drive is about to get, it's under construction now finally, and so as we put all these other intersections into play, then all we have to do is meet in the middle between them, and it starts reducing the, the amount of funding that we have to do locally. Cost breakdown on this one is 1.5, including the 40% match. That makes our match 300,000, 25% of that, we request the county to put in for 75, so our overall cost is 225, which for a, a stoplight control is, is a very good deal. That's why again, even if it's not higher on the priority list per se, it is money saved in the future, and anything spent now is the least amount of cost it's going to be. Same thing, we would, I think I would take money out of the fund balance, capital reserves, and a combination of power bill as, as finance makes it available for this submittal, and again, I would ask DOT to administer the project as its two DOT roads are the intersection. And I do recommend approval of those, of both of them, it's just simply to submit them for funding. If it is approved, then we would encumber those funds, but be able to move forward with both of those projects. Probably we would get NC 75, probably unlikely they'd give us two projects, unless not a lot of people submitted, it's hard to say at this stage. But basically, if, after tonight, we, I would engage Kimley Horn, if we approve the first project to get that completed, then we come back for the October 22 meeting, have a resolution by the board to submit, including the cost sharing, and, and then we'd be able to submit that package on the 31st, and its completeness. Union County is already aware of this, and so their board is, is also being brought up to speed on this request to support us as well when the time comes. Any questions?
When does this call for projects end?
The 31st.
31st, okay. Questions from the board? Commissioner Burns, do you have any questions?
No, I don't know.
Commissioner Westlake?
I just want to point out for the citizens that the SDP funds come from the vehicle fee that, that's charged, and so this is an example of where that money is going. I do just want to ask you where it says it's replacing the Pine Oak project, does that mean that that would then be recommended for the following year?
Yeah, we'd be pushed back further in the CIP. Right now, indications are that the, the bridge replacement project, which was warranting, speeding up Pine Oak, is on hold with all the other DOT projects, and so it's not as imminent in terms of needing to use that as a detour, and so for, for that reason, it's reasonable for me to switch them out in the, in the priority.
No, that was my question, I wanted to know what it meant with the Pine Oak being replaced.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
Commissioner Anderson?
No, thank you.
So first of all, thank you. I, it behooves us to apply for grants through the DA funds, it's money that, DOT and the state have made it clear, you pay to play to get some of these roads improved, and so we're going to have to do that. At this point in time, you need from us...
I just need to know if, one, number one, number two, both?
So what you're really asking for is to move forward, to do the...
To prepare the application.
Prepare the application and the concept.
Bring the resolution in the next...
So roughly $10,000 to prepare both of those?
No, it's just $5,000. We already have the data from the corridor study to do the second one in-house.
Okay.
It's just $5,000 out of my budget from professional services that's already, already available to...
You're just asking for approval for these two projects?
Right.
To move forward, for application purposes?
Right.
Anybody like to make that motion?
Motion to approve both projects as presented?
So we have a motion to approve the project as presented, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll see you back on the 22nd.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we have general public comments, and as part of government readiness, we have a, we have five Boy Scouts signed up to, and what they're going to do, their leader, their scout counselor, Ron Green's going to come up and explain what they're going to do, and they are going to, each one of them is going to come up and ask a question. We will not answer it at this point in time, we will prepare a response and get it back to them later this week, but they wanted the opportunity as part of their development to come forward and ask a question of a government entity. So Ron, welcome. Thank you, thank you Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the boys are going through the process of completing their merit badge for citizenship of the community, and as a part of that, they'll attend the meeting, but I'd like for them to interact with leaders in the local community. So them asking a question will help them continue their effort in learning how to commit, work with the community, so I want to thank you guys for allowing us to do this. They're going to say their name, and then they're going to ask their question. I know you'll respond in writing.
Or, you know, since they want to learn about government, how about if they come back on the twenty-second and we give the answers in person to them?
I'll talk to them about that.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Tristan Ridgeway, and my question is, who decides which roads need resurfacing?
Okay, thank you. The question is, who decides? You're capturing these, Melly? Who decides which roads need, get to be resurfaced, okay? Have a seat, sit down and...
My name's Ronald...
Could you speak into the microphone?
My name's Ronald Green, and my question is, what's the reason behind the rezoning?
Thank you.
My name is Luke Bailey, and my question is, where Gray Byram and Waxahaw Marvin meet, could there not be a roundabout instead of a traffic light there?
Great question, and we will make sure that Mr. Hubert answers that one.
My name is Sebastian Ridgway, and my question is, where can you buy the red ribbons?
Great question. Thank you.
My name is Jessie Mendel, and my question is, relate to the roundabout. Why was it chosen to be there and not another place?
Okay, thank you. All great questions, thank you. We will prepare a written response, and we can either get them to you, but we really like to have you back on the twenty-second, so hope to see you again, okay? Thank you very much. At this point, town leadership reports. Manager Smith?
Yeah, I'm calling Matt back up first and let him give a couple of other updates on a couple of transportation projects, and then I get to play Dina tonight. Unfortunately, she had a family situation come up, and so I'm going to give you a little update on recreation.
Hello again. I'm ready to answer the questions if you want. So yeah, a couple of just items of information for the public. Before I forget, I'll say the yard more construction and the apartments now, they're going to be working on Church Street in front of their site all this week, so that road's going to be closed more often than not, as it's just too dangerous to have traffic and the amount of work they're doing on the street happen at the same time. They should be done by Thursday afternoon, certainly safed up for the weekend's activities. As I mentioned earlier, the Kensington and Waxahaw Marvin Road intersection is currently underway. Full project is going to be undertaken at this point. They've got all the funding and the right of way they've been waiting on, and that'll be the new stoplight, the new signal arms, new lane additions, better site visibility, all completed next spring. So a long time overdue and exciting. And then specifically, we're going to hold a public meeting this Thursday from four to six at the Forest Hills Church to go over the Kensington Drive improvements, another project where we're adding laneage at the intersection of NC sixteen to reduce, we're going to add a right-turn lane, and that's going to reduce the amount of congestion we see there on a regular basis. We're also adding through lanes and turn lanes in the middle section between Providence and Sunset Hill Road, which again will relieve the congestion so turning movements can happen and through movements can happen all at the same time. And then finally, we're going to lower the elevation of the road at Connell's Point, so you have better site distance and increase the safety. So this is an opportunity as part of the environmental documentation we have to complete for federal funding. We have to have a public meeting, and we're going to have it on Thursday. Hope to see anyone out there that's interested for more detail. Next, we're in a call for projects, or comment, public comment from the CRTPO, and this is specific to Waxahaw because there's one project that's on the list, considered for prioritization next year as part of TIP six-point-oh. This is the Waxahaw Parkway East section from NC sixteen over to seventy-five on the northeast leg, one of the more vital links in terms of need that will help route traffic that doesn't have to go through downtown outside to get toward Monroe. Public comments are being received, and the email address is here. It's on our website. There's an opportunity for residents to chime in and give their opinion on the need. It's currently not funded, so we really need to push this over into the next prioritization and get funding for this so we have something. We know the widening is coming down to the Parkway at 2027. If we don't have anywhere for this traffic to go other than downtown, it's just not good, to say the least. So I encourage anyone to get out there, either on the website, click the link, or you can actually go, and they'll have two meetings in Charlotte, one on October sixteenth and one on November twentieth, if you want to show up in force and, you know, promote this project. The more the merrier. Vote early, vote often this season. And that's all I have for this week.
But your main point is, if the citizens of Waxahaw think some solutions are needed, it's not at a design point, but a solution is needed to connect sixteen to seventy-five via Waxahaw Parkway, it would help immensely to get comments into the CRTPO.
Absolutely, absolutely. It always helps to have references on file for them because they track each and every one of these comments as a part of the process, and so if this project is on the line and there's nothing in the file that says we're really concerned about it, it's very easy for them to not...
Look the other way.
Right. And it's a significant need, and so I would hope that we get participation in that.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt? Dina?
Just a couple of other things before we get started. I know Todd was here earlier, but the fall cleanup is scheduled for Monday on the fourteenth. We certainly want to encourage folks to get all their things out there on the road, and he'll be able to pick them up, or our contractor will. Also, the input on the growth strategies that Jeff and his crew are working on, the online portion of that is still underway, so there's an opportunity to still have input into that, and the second meeting, there'll be a second meeting follow-up in October that will pass on the results for that. Okay, Parks and Recreation update. A couple of community programs you want to be aware of. They're still going on. The yoga and the outdoor conditioning that started early in September continue to go. October is traditionally Fire Prevention Month, and so tomorrow, there's a open house from four to six at the Fire Department that our Fire Marshal is conducting. He had one over the weekend, but there were a lot of community activities, and so he was a little disappointed to turn out, but hopefully it'll be better moving forward. A couple of other community programs, Family Fun Night on Friday, the eleventh, Paint a Community mural, and we've got Senior Fit Club, fitness, starting on October sixteenth and running through November with some of our community partners, so there's some opportunities there for folks to get out and get involved in some of our programming. Senior Coffee is scheduled for Thursday, the seventeenth, at the Duncan McDonald House downtown from ten to twelve, and then we have a Self Defense for Teens that's also going to go on at the Duncan McDonald House on Monday, October the twenty-first. You can sign up for all those through the website there at the Town's Recreation Department, but the biggest thing that's coming up in Waxahaw is this weekend, the Autumn Treasures Festival, as well as the barbecue and grilling that's going on that's incorporated in that. There's a lot of things going on. We want to make everybody aware that parking is not going to be available a whole lot downtown, so we encourage you to use the shuttles. And there is a map on the website. I think the board has copies of these maps, but we're encouraging people to ride the shuttles. The shuttles will be available starting every thirty minutes, beginning at nine-thirty on Saturday and eleven-thirty on Sunday, and both of them ending at seven PM, which is really an hour after the event ends. We encourage you to catch those either at Millbridge and Kensington, Athletic Barn, Blythe Mill Road Field, Lawson, and again, our community partner, Five Stones Church is also one of the stops there, so please use the shuttle in order to get downtown and enjoy the festivities during the day. And last but not least, everybody's excited about downtown Waxahaw's Friday night on Saturday, October the twenty-sixth from four to ten PM, so put that on your calendar and make sure to incorporate that downtown. Thank you very much.
Questions? Okay. I have nothing to report. Commissioner DeFenis?
So I would just like to say a big thank you to PAC ninety-nine for their participation this evening. I'm really proud of you guys and how well behaved you've been during the meeting, and I hope when you all reach scouts, you will come back and work towards your citizenship badge. But just for information, the boys are working towards their Paws to Country badge tonight, and I'm really proud of their efforts and everything that they're accomplishing. This group works once a month and makes eight-hundred sandwiches that are donated to the Union County Shelter or Urban Ministries. Our larger PAC is approximately a hundred and forty kids, so there's quite a bit that this team does throughout the year, and I'm proud of this group, and I'm also proud of the Boy Scouts that presented to us tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
I just want to echo the same sentiments as an overgrown Girl Scout myself. I'm really proud of all of you. You are great examples of citizenship, and you have been very well behaved tonight, and you did an amazing job presenting the colors, so thank you very much.
Mayor Protem McMillan?
I have a few things to say that I haven't said in the past, and I just want to do it tonight. First, thank the scouts and their parents for coming out tonight. We do appreciate all your work and what the young men are doing. Today, the board received packets from ten search firms that they will review for the interview stage in selecting a firm as we move forward towards the hiring of a new town manager. I also would like to speak on some things regarding my role as Commissioner here for the town of Waxahaw. When I was elected as Commissioner, I had hoped that the incoming board would represent some much-needed change and have the ability to move forward addressing the needs of the town. This has been a true learning process in many ways regarding our and, in particular, my role. With that, I find that I must apologize to the citizens for my actions, as I believe that I have been somewhat complacent and even complicit in things that have been occurring here in the town and with the board. I have tried to follow the guidelines and rules, although maybe not providing full information necessary or not speaking up more openly regarding things that I have seen occur, and this ranges from votes to information and even questions that I have received from citizens. And in particular, I have to refer to the last board meeting of September twenty-fourth. We were presented with a commercial business, that being Valvoline, to come and work here in the town of Waxahaw. The board voted against that business, although the planning board unanimously made a recommendation to the board, and the planning staff requested approval showing that the company met all requirements. The vote noted that the conditional district rezoning was not consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future goals of the town of Waxahaw and was not in the public interest. This was a decision, although there is a gas station and even a Goodyear business in the same proximity. I respect the vote and the board's decision, but disagreeing with the outcome and not verbalizing that disagreement at the time. And with that, I have received many questions on the outcome and questions about the vote from citizens. We have a planning board that votes on agenda items presented by the planning staff that comes before the board with recommendations based upon guidelines of the current UDO and comprehensive plan. That staff is led by Mr. Jeff Wells, who works diligently for our town. When we say that businesses are watching and we do not want, and they do not want to come here, they are also watching and following our own guidelines, and even if it is beneficial for companies and businesses to go through the planning process if they will not be allowed to open a business here. At the September twenty-fourth meeting, the mayor also spoke of a social media post, which may have cost the town business. There has been and continues to be distractions and negativity, which is projected through social media and other forms that put our town in a bad light. I don't follow social media, and I'm not really on social media, but I've been made aware of these postings. There are and continue to be references on social media about elected officials and even officials making references to other officials. Whatever our differences are, or may be, if any, it should not be played out online. Our duty, our first duty as elected officials is to the town of Waxahaw, and we have a code of ethics that require us to act accordingly. Some comments, postings have been derogatory statements, letters, some of a confidential nature, and ultimately, the consequences are hurting the town. Citizens are again watching and questioning why they are seeing orders of protection, restraining orders, and now complaints posted regarding commissioners online. They are asking why personal information is being shared. This is not who we are as Waxahaw, nor is it indicative of who we are as Waxahaw. The citizens want to know what is happening with the tax base, the infrastructure, the roads, the sidewalks, building, housing, downtown development, and recreational activities for our families. We must go back to the business of the town and be about the business of the town. So I speak for myself in stating that it is incumbent upon me, and hopefully upon all of us, to do better for the citizens that we have been elected to represent and to serve.
Thank you. Commissioner Westlake?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for that statement. Yeah, I just want to say, on September twenty-sixth, I attended the public policy luncheon sponsored by the Union County Chamber along with Mayor Protem McMillan. We had some great dialogue with our local state representatives and senators regarding some recent bills and the state budget. And tomorrow, I will be attending the Centralina Council of Governments meeting, where I will be part of the Caucus for Union County to select representatives to serve on a policy committee for the regional transit plan. Thank you.
Commissioner Burns? At this time, we have a brief closed-session item, so we will adjourn to closed session here in a minute. We don't, you're free to leave at that point in time, Cub Scouts. I know it's been a long night for you, as I see the yawns there, but thank you again for being here. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen.
So moved.
And we will include Attorney Buckley, Manager Smith, and Clerk Schuler.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.